Let's get started and let the record show that everyone is present. And we're gonna stand, and I'm asking Chuck Burgess as he would lead us in prayer, and we'll remain standing for our pledge.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this day that you've given us, Lord. We thank you for the time that we have this afternoon, Lord, to come and just deliberate our city's business, Lord. I lift up the mayor and the council to you, Lord. I just ask you to give them wisdom and guidance to make good decisions, Lord. And I pray that we will maintain unity, Father, and respect in this room for each other, Lord, knowing that we don't all agree with each other, Lord. But I just pray that we will be agreeable with each other. And I pray that you will guide our thoughts, guide our minds, guide our words this afternoon. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And there's another couple of minutes we'll prove them. Yes. I want to thank everybody for coming out. Nothing like throwing something out to get people to come. But I do appreciate everybody coming to voice your opinions and to give, you know, to just listen to what we have to say tonight. And as Chuck said, unity. I mean, this isn't about disagreeing or anything else. It's everybody has opinions and has their ideas, and that's what we're here for tonight. At our last council meeting, we brought up the RCA trucking that wanted to come, wants to come, didn't want to, the way they want to. And there's a disagreement amongst a lot of people about land being given and all of that. But I've asked Dennis and Chad either one to come and explain a little bit about your business, what you want to bring to op.
Chad, you want to start? Pulling up yourself.
I'm Chad Sessions.
Okay, get over there close to the market. Okay, this kind of trouble.
Move it over. We understand you're a big worker. Move it over. I feel you, buddy. Go ahead.
I'm Chad Sessions. I've been in the trucking industry 25 years, from everything, from dispatching to driving, to running trucking companies. Me and Dennis went into business together August of last year. And at that time, he had two trucks. We've grown it into 22 trucks. Right now, we're bringing space that we're working out of in Bassin', Alabama. And we're growing at a rapid pace, and we need a place to call home. And that's what we're presenting to y'all tonight, is what our ideas is and what we'd like to see being op.
Just to go over some of the questions that we've seen posed and we've seen voiced to clear some things up. Chad's from Kinston. I'm from Kinston. Chad's child goes to op. My two kids go to Kinston. If we consider ourselves to be from Kinston, we consider ourselves to be from op, because everything we've ever done, y'all are shopping. I play ball. He's been a soccer coach and a baseball coach of mine, so TD Morgan right there. We both played ball of our lives in op. We consider Kinston and op both our homes. So for the first question we'd seen was, where are these folks from with RCA trucking? What type do they have to the community? That's our first and foremost tie to our community. We could have been anywhere, anywhere doing this, but both of us love Kinston and op area. This is where we want to be. And we don't want our hard work and our tax dollars to go anywhere else but to our local area. That's first and foremost. That's why we're here. That's why we want to be in op.
And what the RCA stands for is actually is our children's initials, Rowland, Case, and Aggie. And that's, our company is based off a family, is four family. It's, mine and Dennis' is living. Our family's namesake is riding with this. A lot of people have said, well, if we're not around in two years, we're planning on being here, to be honest with you, forever. We've got mine and Dennis' lives, families, everything's tied into this. So we have a lot more to lose than anybody else. We're not, you know, from out of state saying, well, what if we put a business in op? If it makes it, it makes it. If it don't, it don't. We're not from there. We're not, you know, we don't have anything really in it for, as far as reputation and all that. Y'all, most of you know us. We're hometown boys, and we want to succeed more than anybody else in this room.
To touch on a little bit about, Chad mentioned about our investment. Like I said, RCA was established September the 23rd, 2016, with two employees, two trucks and two trailers. We're currently at 28 employees. We have a fleet of 22 trucks, and we've got 25 trailers total right now. Anyone that has any connection to the logistics industry knows to grow that fast is feeding its own, just to keep our drivers. And to get the drivers that we've got, and it's very simple, I won't give you the details of our business plan, but it's very simple. How we've gotten to this point is one thing. We are passionate about trucking, and we're passionate about our employees. That's how we've gotten to where we are. We don't spend the budget on recruiting because our drivers recruit other drivers. That's why we want to be in op, because our passion of trucking and our passion of a small town, and that is what's built our company to where it is today, and that's what will help us. I've often understood the fact that if you're told when you're little to do something you love and you'll never work a day. And Chad and I are truly passionate of this, and we truly love it. And to get there, we've supported our drivers 100%. We treat them like family, and that's how we've gotten where we are today. And we know those are the same values that many of you in this room distill yourself. To speak on some numbers of investment, and this is from a compiled financial statement from our accountant. Our current investments right now in the equipment that we own, our fixed assets, both short and long term, is $2,671,000 that we've currently invested to date right now, okay? What can RCA bring to op? On day one, we'll bring our current investment of $2,671,000 in infrastructure to op on day one. Within six months of the project begin date, we will build an office, a shop, and a truckyard. That date, that projected cost will be $484,412. What we've passed around is the engineered plans of the business, what it looks like, everything there. So you understand that we're not just saying, hey, if we can come to op, we're gonna build this. Now, we've already got the plans drawn out. We've got everything already figured out of what we've got to do. Now, we've currently ordered, because right now the situation of getting equipment in the trucking industry is so long now, they can't physically build trucks and trailers quick enough. We've put in an order for 10 more trucks and trailers. We've already paid a 5% deposit down on both the trucks and the trailers. So that's another investment of $1,930,000 that we will bring to op, okay? Total investment in op in 2019 year will be $5,85,412. Guys, I'm just gonna be honest with you, I'll throw it out there, it's everything Chad and I've got. Both of our families, it's everything we've got for that money right there. That investment, if op will help us with the land, I'm gonna give the land a value of $4,000 on the bypass, which I think is a very fair number. That's $64,000 at 16 acres. We're asking for an additional $30,000 worth in that neighborhood of dirtwork. That brings your contribution to 94,000. Of the 5,85,000 we're investing, that's a 1.75% investment. That's what we're asking for from op, is a 1.75% investment in what we're doing. We have plans to grow from that point. We won't get into that, but that's where we are for right now. We're humbled to even be in this room. We could not tell you how humbling it is to see the support we've gotten. We're humbled, and we thank y'all for your time and anything you can do for us. When we come to op, that's what we're leaving.
Do any of y'all have any questions for Chad or Dennis? Are you gonna take them to the chair?
I will.
Okay, if you have what you say, $3 million investment, why do you need free land?
Ours.
And, number two, that's one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Number two is, who has seen your financials?
We do everything right here in op. Our banks in op. Our banker knows them left and right to control our finances. Like I said, these are compiled, these are compiled numbers from our accountant, hot off the press as of about lunchtime today. Our investment right now is the investment you have to make for a trucking company. It's equipment, computers, infrastructure. That's what it is. Our networking system, our dispatching system, our trucks, that's every bit of our investment. And that's the problem. That's where we're at. We've invested everything we've got to get to this point in our equipment. The next step, because we have physically outgrown the space that we're in renting currently, has got to be a new location. For us to add on the next 10 trucks that we've already put a deposit on, we physically have to be somewhere else.
16 acres. You need 16 acres for dirtworks?
Yes, ma'am. I sincerely believe we do.
Well, we've got a couple of trucking companies in op that have five and six and seven acres of land.
I'll give you the exacts. Buddy Moore is on 6.1 acres exactly. H.D. Edgar is currently, his square where he is is 4.64 acres, plus the purchase of the Old Carolina Eastern of 2.41, making an investment of 7.5 acres. Now, with that said, both of these companies also have trailers dropped in other locations. Because you see that they're already at max capacity at where they're at, we realize where we'll be, and we'll be a number very comparable to both companies very quickly.
Not only that, the other companies have, well, yards in other locations also.
And why can't you do that? Why do you need 16 acres? And back to my first question, who has seen your financials?
Well, to be right honest with you, our accountant, our banker, who else needs to see?
You said ours. I think all these folks up here need one. If they're gonna give you land, these folks need to know what your financials are.
I understand where you're coming from. And with the right scenarios, that could be done.
What's the scenario?
Proof that our financials will stay with them. That's a very confident thing. We're not publicly traded company. We don't have to share our financials, so.
No, you absolutely don't. You're absolutely right on that. But if they're gonna give you land, they have the right to see it.
Could not agree with you anymore.
Then you're going to let them see those financials?
I will have to get with my accountant and make sure that's something we can do.
Is that a no or a yes?
That's, I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, is there any more questions?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, TD?
You say you got to have 16 acres. You couldn't split that in half and use like eight acres or 10 acres or?
For what? For the growth that we have set up, and I did not go into how we're going to grow. I did not go into that because it's not complicated, but I don't want to take up any more time. We have to. We will be on the total 16 acres for. So Chad and I also own a truck brokerage that will also be housed there. We have other things. We want a full service, a diesel shop, not only to service our stuff, but we want a full-service diesel shop in the city of op.
Retail, retail service?
Yes, sir, retail service. There's the lack of any of that involved right now. There's no 24/7 call. Luckily, we've got, a little pressing to come if you need tires, but anything besides tires in the city of op or a surrounding 50-mile radius, you have nothing. We will have, in about two years, a full-scale diesel shop with 24 tires, 24/7 mobile service. We also currently split the way we do business. We split some of ours with lease-to-own purchase through Pinsky, and we split the other through Volvo and Freightliner. Pinsky wants a location in op, Alabama. If we can ever get here, we can get them to come with a retail hub. So that's two more retails that will be on the same parcel. That's why we want the full 16 acres.
Well, not only, I mean, are we saying, hey, y'all want us to come, we'll bring a trucking company, but you're also getting, to be honest with you, two entrepreneurs who are gonna bring other things to op.
Graham, give you one second.
Yes. How many, how much of your equipment is owned by RCA? How much of it is leased through folks like Pinsky?
Our leases through Pinsky come with a complete maintenance program, but they are leased to own packages, so every bit of it's owned by RCA.
Okay, well, that's my question. And the reason I'm bringing that up, one of the things talked about is tax revenue. And if it is a leased vehicle, Covington County doesn't get that. You get your tags, or Pinsky, rider people like that buy their tags in another state like we do. We own 1,500 units between trailers, tractors, and things of that nature in Covington County. So we contribute a lot of tax revenue to the community, and that's one of the points that I feel like is lacking in this. You don't have any kind of.
No, actually, Rusty, let me interrupt you, but we actually own all of our trailers. We, all the other equipment that we're gaining is all being purchased outright by us. Our current tractors.
You'll own 10 units and?
10 brand-new units that we've purchased, plus what we already own.
Plus what we already own. The only. Trying to get to, how many tractors do you already own?
As of right now, it would be 13 units. We'll bring an additional 10. We'll bring additional 10 in 2019 for 23. That'll be 23 units on, that will go to Covington County, and we'll stand in line at the probate office, and we'll get our ad valorem taxes, which on each truck's about, you can back me 36, 3800 bucks on a new truck.
Yes, sir.
We'll get all of our tags, which will be about $2,200 per truck. We'll get another 10 trailers, your bad valorms on them, all that will go to Covington County. Yes, sir. To be honest with you, we were, because of Trump's done excellent vision for what we, for what the industry we're in with his, the way he's got it set up now, that you purchase something and you can write it off 100% depreciation that year for this year and next calendar year, has been a huge benefit for us. We buy 10, we buy 10 more. So the Pinsky leasing deal won't come back around until 2021. Every year, our cycle is 10 trucks. So the Pinsky leasing deal won't come back around to 2021, which is exactly why I said it'll be two years before Pinsky brings a hub to here. Because in the third year of the cycle, we'll go back through them and purchase through them.
Dennis, I've got confidence in you, so I don't know your century's about that high. But, now, if you were to go belly up, like a lot of trucking companies have, what does the land revert back to the city of op?
If the, in my general understanding.
It's gonna go to bankruptcy. I mean, that's what it is. That's called.
It'll go.
I mean, my.
You're correct. Because that will be the first lien holder on that property.
Who will be?
SIB.
Okay. So then, that goes bankrupt, they go back to SIB?
Correct.
So op's just out of the money, out of the land?
No, ma'am.
How's that work?
Once that happens, if they don't, they have to find a buyer. SIB does. If they don't within a certain amount of time, if I'm wrong, correct me. Anyway, anyway, federal government, because it's in bankruptcy, they have to get rid of it. At that time, whoever has the option to buy it with us, a city or a private individual.
Does this be a local loan or this a federal loan?
It's right down the road.
It's SIB.
So is our construction company that those engineers are blueprinting and stamped from. So is our building materials company, right down the road. I mean, everything we're doing is to support locals. What projects have come to op that's wanting to invest $85,000 with an actual plan to back it up? And all of these are good questions. I understand where you're coming from.
Be honest with you, we've had five other cities come to us and say, hey, would y'all please come here?
Since Monday night?
Since Monday night. This has been mind-blowing.
Well, it's, we've had several before then, but we've had a lot more since the thing that's went viral, I should say.
Someone's got their hand up out there, I can't see. What did the other cities offer?
Actually, quite a bit more than op does.
I can tell you this, and I.
But we're, I mean, op is, we're located there.
This is where we want to be. This is our first choice. This is home for us.
And I hope that when you're through, that I can explain a lot of things that will answer Doris' question and the other questions.
You probably need to go ahead and get to those, because I think people are hung up, and I think there is some value here, big time, that I didn't know. This would've been a whole lot easier.
All right, let me talk about economic, let me talk about economic development. And a lot of people don't understand, have no clue about economic development. I didn't until I became mayor, or a little bit before. And we are, economic development is so competitive. Somebody's gonna offer you, you're not, nobody's gonna come to op Alabama unless we give them something. And you can accept it, you can fuss about it, you can, and he said, I could definitely get his name, and I was hoping y'all would leave the room before I told you, but Earl Johnson definitely wants to give you 16 acres in Andalucia if you'll come. I was hoping I'd get to say that, I mean, y'all left, but you're not going there. But anyway, I know he definitely did. I know of two other entities that I have talked to that are definitely willing to match what we are willing to do, and I appreciate you wanting to be here. We're talking about giving land away, and that's one of the things, well, I'll get into that for a minute. And I was gonna, I told Rick he might want to be here. He's our economic developer for Covington County. He knows how hard it is. We're in competition with everybody, the small, big, every town wants a business to come in. And they're gonna give you tax incentives, they're gonna give you land, they're gonna give you in-kind services, they're gonna do something to get you there. And I think we're very lucky to have that piece of land, which you valued it at 4,000. We paid 21 for it, so it's like 33.6, you know, if we wanted to sell it. It's been sitting there since 2002, and not every mayor has tried to get something there. Nobody's come in and wanted it there. So it's kind of the old saying, it's only worth what somebody's willing to pay for. And so far, it's zero. And so we also have, and everybody needs to know, how much are you putting in the building?
In the building?
Just go with the building.
In the building, building, office, yard, fence is $448,815.
Okay.
On day one.
We applied for a grant from DOT, and they're willing to put a $350,000 access road there. So you've got over an 800 and something, 100,000 investment, and we're fussing over 3200, I mean, 32,000 to get a business in here. I don't see it. I don't see it. We have. You know what's pissing about him? No, not pissing. But before all this needed to be dropped, we needed to know all this. Yeah, and that's what, that's why we're telling this, so everybody will understand. People need to have a chance to digest it before it's brought up to be voted on. I mean, and this may be a good thing, and it looks like it may be. But that still doesn't alter the fact that we need to know that. Okay. You know, and I want to point out what the city of op has done for Sunoco. We gave them a building. We, Global has been, and I'm not saying this administration, but administrations have, Global has helped Global tremendously, put a lot of money in there. MFG, we built them a building, we've added on to them. American Apparel, we bought them machines. That's what a city does. You help the existing businesses, you do give incentives to get business here. That's economic development. And people, you know, really don't get it. But that's why. And I'm gonna go over some of the questions. Why do they need 16 acres? That's one of the main things everybody says. Well, you know, they want to expand. They're not gonna, they don't need 16 acres right now. And we could try to make a deal with, let's give you eight, and then in a few years, let's give you some more and all of that. That would mess up your fencing, that would mess up where you're gonna put it. And then you'd have maybe, maybe if you only needed eight for the rest of your life or the rest of the business, you know, you'd have eight acres sitting there. Is there something gonna come there or, you know? So I say that the investment is worth 16 acres.
Can I say something on that? Also, you know, when this thing whole started back, how long we've been doing this, months now? A while. I mean, there were, there was another offer on the table at the time. And let me say, I've been buying and selling and making deals for the last 20 years of my life, and sometimes you just can't make a bet. I mean, sometimes you just got to say, I'll max that deal. I mean, so that's, that's, I want people to understand that's also where, just like they talked about, that's where it's coming in. We had to bid against somebody else. It wasn't, we didn't just pull the number out. I mean, that's where we're coming from on this. And I'll be the first to say too, I don't like the way economic development is now. I wish it was like it was many years ago, where people came and bought land and built their own building and that type of thing, but unfortunately, because it hurts little towns like op. You know, that's, it really hurts us the worst of any of the towns, you know, but it's just what it is. It is what it is.
The facts are, if we didn't get to sit in front of these guys, we didn't see this. That's why we voted like we did last time. If we would've seen this and known what we know today, boy, our life would've been a lot easier, and people wouldn't have talked about us like we're idiots on Facebook.
Well, now, we had gone over, we had given, not that, we just got that.
Those two.
This is the first time we've actually seen each other.
Well, you know, and Chad, I call this Chad's baby. Chad knows him, and he knew about it, and he has been working diligently with them and trying to get this deal done. Takes the whole council to get it done. Yeah, it does.
It's gonna take more than a council. It's gonna take the council and the town of op. But what you've got to understand, if y'all are willing to give 100%, we're willing to give 100%.
Another question is, we've got, Graham's sitting back there, we've got two successful trucking businesses. Nobody gave Durrwood Edgar anything when he went into business. And he has been, him and Harold Salz, who started MFG, they didn't get anything. They didn't get land, and they did it on their own. That was then. 2018, that's not the way it is. It doesn't go. And I've been, you know, I know that a lot of people are saying, well, we don't want to hurt those two trucking businesses. I mean, you know, we don't want to hurt them, we don't want to make them mad, and we want to support them. Well, what you're telling me is, as mayor and council, okay, if McDonald's comes to me, I better not get it in, because that's gonna hurt Burger King, that's gonna hurt Hardee's, that, you know, competition's competition. The more you have in a town, the more you have to offer. And that's, you know, so that was another question. Let's see, okay. Another was that that land is on Covington Electric. We're not gonna benefit from it, because it's not on us. Well, that's totally wrong. And anybody that doesn't think that Covington Electric, absolute, I cannot tell you what they do for this city. You don't want to cut them down at all. And we also get a franchise fee, 3%, so we do get money by them being with Covington Electric, okay? Let's see, what else? Okay, what will be the economic impact? And I think you've pretty much gone over that, but it increases our job force, it provides job opportunities, property taxes you will be paying, the city, you know, doesn't pay property tax on that. There's also other taxes that we'll gain from you, and it'll encourage more retail sales, it'll encourage people to go to IGA or grocery outlet and buy their groceries while they're here, you know, some people, eating establishments. You know, you don't want to turn down a business that's gonna help grow your city over giving them 30 something, 16 acres of land, when I know that there's others that will do it. And that's not hearsay. Earl Johnson. Earl Johnson told me he would be here tonight to offer it to y'all, and I said, no. I said, you keep yourself away. But anyway, that, that's it. And it's like Doris says, it's not really disagreeing. It's just you wanna know the facts, and put the facts out there. And that's what this meeting is for, to put everybody to come, listen to the facts. And I think it'll be a great benefit to Op. We'll have something else on the bypass. And I think the investment will be well worth it.
I got one question. Explain the, the access road deal with the DOT.
Okay.
What is the criteria to be able to get that access road?
Uh, and the grant has been put in. I can't, okay, okay, Jason, you wanna say?
They have committed to, above the commerce, that they would have 70 people employed by, in five years. And Commerce makes a comment to DOT to back, back each other up on the road.
Within five years, they don't have 70 employees?
I can't.
Within five years, if they have 68 employees, who assumes the cost of that access road?
Well-
They won't dig it up.
No. And I-
When, when they have committed to Commerce, Commerce has a call back clause. If they don't bring new employees, then they come to them. What benefit is that to us? We have the road.
So you're saying that's no risk to Op?
I don't see any risk getting to Op.
Okay, they can't, I mean, they can't.
Now, they haven't made the final decision either.
Right.
Because this discussion has reached them.
Yeah, and I mean, and I'm gonna be honest-
I'm asking the questions, I'm being answered.
Okay. Okay, and, and this is the thing, I, I am trying very hard to work with our representatives and all. And they're the ones that make big decisions, and they're not happy. They're not happy right now. And they, I mean-
With us?
With us. They're not happy, they said if y'all don't, you know, how can we help you? We, we've said we're gonna do this, and then y'all are saying, no, we don't, I don't think we won't get anything in here. And they said the next time y'all ask, it's gonna be, you know, John Cooper is one of the main ones that can make this decision, and he had said, it's, we can do this.
You mentioned, you mentioned to me that this memorandum of understanding was gonna have contingencies in it.
It does.
Right.
Okay. Alright, let's see. Okay, where, if it's ours to locate, it's facilities Op to add operations. And, and where's Jason? This one hasn't got that on there. Let me put it on there. Where is Jason? Jason, this one still doesn't have what, you know, this afternoon when I talked to you about it, about the building.
Did you, since you get the wrong one again?
No, it's one that was put in my packet.
My copy says under 100, uh, senior of the Bay of Property, described in exhibit A. So RCA after the company construction occupies an office building and shop itself.
That's number one. Okay, it goes, I'm sorry, it's right over there. Okay. Go ahead and read this one. That's after they do the thing. And the last one on six says about the road, about the other. Six.
And each, and each degree, and each degree contingent upon us getting that funding.
Contingent on the file approval and funding. Yes, so it is there. Yeah, on six and one. Okay. So this is all, nothing, the land will not be transferred to your name until the building and the, and DOT puts the road.
Correct, and Mayor, if I may, to Doris, I think that would answer your question. Instead of us divulging our, because we are LLC, our personal finances along with everything we've got, that, that shores up your question. They're not just gonna give us the land today and hope we can build a building. The land is not needed until the building is in place, the gravel's there, and we're sitting in an office.
And DOT has done that.
And DOT has built the road.
It's all contingent on that.
Do we have a timeline on completion?
Oh, I don't know, Jason, but this has to be turned in. We have to approve this pretty soon, or we don't get the access road. When do we have to have this in the DOT next week?
Application is in.
The application's in.
The first, the second week in October.
Second week in October.
I mean, what I was referring to is the completion on innocence building and parking area and paving.
He wants it as soon as possible.
We're finding it ready. You go home and get your shovel, we'll start the second one.
Does anybody, okay. I've got another question that, that I've been concerned about in the inception of this. You say you have 28 employees. What, what is the division of these employees? Do you have office employees, you have driver employees, or are you counting your owner-operators as employees too?
Our, our total number makeup is our drivers, our office employee, our shop, and two managerial positions is included in the 28.
How many owner-operators do you often have hired yet?
We currently have three, and they are considered by the state of Alabama employees with us. They're on our Blue Cross Blue Shield program.
Owner-operators are not employees, but. Anyway, my thing too with that is that-
You're not very good at that. Actually, if you've got somebody at work for you to use exclusively, you will have workers comp, and they are-
Oh, I know, but they're not employees.
The state of Alabama considers employees, I have workers comp to cover them, and I have excellent Blue Cross Blue Shield silver to cover them.
A lot of citizens around here don't realize that, then there's a loop to get in for that. But the thing is, when you build this building out here, and just saying that you don't meet the criteria of the 70 employees, is that 70 trucker employees included in that 70, or is it people that have worked physically in that building?
70 total net new employees.
No matter where they work out of?
Correct. We, we only have one location, so they all work out of there.
Truckers are considered as part of that number.
Yes, ma'am, sure.
Even though they're not there every day, they're considered part of that number.
Yes, ma'am, their paycheck comes out of there every Thursday.
Now, on that, what, what our concern is, is that we're giving this property away, and to a trucking business, there is very little revenue that we're gonna see from that from the city itself. But the problem is to hire all these truck drivers. You can walk and drive down any of these streets from Buddy Moore Trucking, H.D. Edgar, Hagney, Ann Davis, John Davis. We cannot hire enough drivers to stay in our trucks. You don't have anything special that nobody else has.
Hold on, why can't you hire?
Because either the, the driver pool is already taken, because we have trucking companies already here. We have truckers that aren't insurable, because they drive and wash them, you cannot get them insured. It's very difficult to have a driver pool from this area. To say that you're gonna hire those people from the Op area is, is not a possibility for this area. I know, I'm in it, I know.
Well, we're, we're-
And to say that, that's just an inflated number. That's never gonna happen. Derwood Edgar would love to have 10 right now. He can't find them anywhere.
Let me, let me ask you this.
I don't get it, that's on Liam, that's not on us.
It is, if we give the land away, and then they go under and can't make it.
Well, you did a 600, 800,000 dollar improvement to a piece of property that's vacant.
The bank does.
No, the community does, because the bank's gonna turn around and try to rent it. Yep, I mean, I, I hate to interrupt, but-
Hold on, just say, let, let him just let Doris speak for just a moment.
You've got, you've got a whole bunch of people.
Let me, let me, because-
There's no reason.
Because, ma'am, I don't know who you are or what trucking company you represent, but I can tell you this. My trucking company is different from yours, because I've added 24 drivers in two years. So don't tell me that it can't be done, because we're doing it. And the way we're doing it is the right way. We are, and I don't wanna give my business plan, because there are other trucking companies in here. But to use these numbers, would your trucking company take 24 new drivers in two years?
We certainly could.
Mine's done that.
I mean, absolutely.
This, beside blue, means that I've already got them drug tested and are waiting on a spot. I have 100% of my trucks full, literally. If I could get six more trucks tomorrow, I'd put these four in. Highlighted means I've already ran their MVR, and they're completely ready to go and committed. Just to be on this page means that they're insurable.
Are they from the Op area?
The, because they are truck drivers? No, ma'am, 100%, not everyone of them are. But every one of them gets a paycheck in Op, and they drive through Op, and they do the business in Op.
Yes.
One of the questions I have about that, I wanna make a statement first for everybody's knowledge. The trucking industry, as far as the driver pool, it is aging. The younger people are not getting into trucking, they're getting into technical fields. That's part of the, part of the reason that is, when a person comes out of high school, they have to wait three years before they can legally drive a truck over the road. So we, as an industry, lose these people to other industries.
Sure.
And they come to us later on. At that point in time, they have to have training. And we've had, as a trucking industry, we've been kinda lackadaisical for years, because we hadn't the funds for drivers in the past 10 to 15 years. Driver pool has aged. That driver pool has gotten smaller. The laws have changed. Chad will back this up. 10 years ago, you could run paper logs, and now you have to run E-logs.
That's correct.
If that truck moves, it registers, don't it?
That's correct.
So, used to, a guy could park over here and go down the street.
And Davis Trucking, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to leave them out. Yes, John?
Nevermind. I, I think that people are not seeing the whole picture. The whole picture is this. Counselor, you're in a great seat. Mayor, you're in a great seat with this. And the reason why you are is because the city doesn't have to build this building. And as Rick was speaking before, it's not costing the city a dime. If they left tomorrow, the community has a building that the city does not have to operate, that it not have to build, and are able to get another company into the building. So you have a building that Op, City of Op, does not have to build. Anytime you can get anybody into Op, does not have to build, Op City of Op doesn't have to build a building like we have this spec building. You don't have to spend that kind of money, that 3, 400,000 dollars out of your budget. It is great to have an access road, that we've been trying to get for a long time. We built one, it was 700,000 dollars. This was gonna be free. So, the picture is that, and I see the picture of it is, if they left tomorrow, the city is blessed with a building that somebody else can come and get it, but I wish the best for you gentlemen.
And I hate for Op to always be, let's figure out how we can stop something from coming, instead of trying to figure out how we can get something into Op. I mean, I think, I think our mindset is more on, let's, oh gosh, let's figure out how to stop this. And-
I don't think that's true. I think we all want to, want to-
I think, yo, I think we all want to, but our mindset is, is so, um, we're, we're more negative about things coming in than a lot of communities are. I don't think we fight as hard to get something in as some do. I mean, that's just my-
If you give us the information, I'm sure we'll go long with it.
We've had one town that's offered 37 acres, who used to- No, we had them doing all the dirt work and everything.
From my household, Chad's, they're literally an equal distance from Op.
Any more questions, counsel? Any more questions? Boy, excuse me, okay, raise it really high, sorry.
I, I really don't have a problem with the city investing in the future, essentially. But if we're gonna invest in you, I have an interest in the Op doughnut shop. How many doughnuts you gonna buy?
Look at Dennis, no, Billy, you don't look at him.
Look at those two guys.
You sign a slip, you gonna get a freaking flyer, or you gonna get a call, or you flipping every time I come in, or what?
Any other questions?
Mayor, I don't have a question, just a couple of comments. First, I'd like to commend you and our board, our council members, because I would, I don't envy y'all being in those seats. And I want to commend each of you for wanting to do the homework and wanting to investigate before we make hasty decisions. So, kudos to you.
Well, that's what, you know, everybody's gotten on Facebook and cut everybody down, and, and we should get a new council, mayor, whatever. And John went through that too, and TD, I mean, that's the way it is. But if you've got a good council, and they're doing their homework, and that's what they wanted to do, and they had questions, and so, I think they did a fantastic job. And I think we're gonna, and we're working together, I mean, it doesn't matter if we disagree, that's okay.
We agree, I think.
Yeah.
Mitch Walkin voted against, didn't get a second.
Well, we have worked with Chad on this since day one. When he come to us, it's, I mean, we've met with him pretty much every week, at least once or twice. But he's got a very strong understanding of what we had and where we're coming from.
I think there's a lot of miscommunication, that's the reason everybody was up in the uproar and had to draw in the wallet.
Well, I'll say that, you put that one on mine.
So, I mean, I think we'd have more information about what-
Yes, I just didn't get you finished. The second thing is, I wanted to commend both of you for wanting, for having that entrepreneurial spirit and choosing Op, wanting to be a part of us. And the third thing is, I represent the Op Chamber of Commerce, and she don't ask me to give a member-
That's right.
If this deal goes through, I hope you would join, join forces with us to better this community. So come send me the deed book if this deal goes through.
And you're not just getting two Chamber of Commerce members, you're getting two Chamber of Commerce soldiers. Because if we can get this to go through, we'll never forget what Op did for us. Why do we not hold that opportunity for any business we could get here?
Just to clarify, you said 70 new employees? You already have 28?
28, total 80.
So that would be 98 total employees, or?
70 new, net new employees from now, yes.
So that would be 98. Am I not doing math?
No, I mean, I'm gonna be on math, 70 plus 28 is 98.
So what does net mean then? Is that a different word here?
Total of, I have a total of 70 employees in five years here, Chris.
Okay, total of 70.
Thank you. The new is, they're not here now. When he brings those, and then he adds to it, to up to 70.
Well, he mentioned 78.
And then, and that 70 employees did get out, and it got out, and he was bringing 70 and all of that. And miscommunication in Op is, you know, and everywhere's, you know. But anyway, does everybody, you know? Now, counsel, you have the opportunity to vote on it tonight, or you can, we can vote on it Monday, we can do whatever we wanna do. Now?
We're gonna wait Monday.
Yeah, we were told we're gonna vote, we were trying to vote, we're not gonna vote tonight.
Who told you all that? Y'all got to start, y'all starting to catch the call, man.
Here we are, we don't, we don't get this information. We haven't got your information. We're put on the spot here. We gotta vote on this without information. And it, it puts us on the spot. We couldn't vote on this stuff, or, you know, what were y'all at the meeting? It really made us a bit like crap.
Y'all wouldn't be sitting here right now with all that information.
Just to say something real quick, I will be here Monday, being my wife for start 20th anniversary.
Okay.
Out there. It'll also be at this next meeting, but, uh, hope I can come back and everything's-
We can call this, that's not the issue.
Thank y'all for talking.
Thank you, thank y'all, appreciate, appreciate. The next thing we're to go and discuss, and I think most of you are here for them, we put out an ordinance, and I guess mainly to get people's attention. Anybody can tell you, ever since I've been in, every time I end my meeting, it's about cleaning up Op. Getting the property in Op cleaned up. Riddle properties, uh, every, every property. Anybody that owns any kind of property needs to clean it up. And this is one of our main complaints every single day. And anybody that works at the city can tell you that. We just have a lot of places that are not kept up. They're not code, what our codes call for, they're, nobody ever enforces the codes. We have codes in place, but nobody wants to enforce them. They don't wanna make anybody mad. We're all friends, we're all, you know, and so, they're just left undone. So the houses are in disrepair, they're not safe for the renters. And we're trying to come up with something that will help hold the people accountable that rent homes, and, and so it will be safe for them and their. So many things in this old ordinance have already been taken out, wasn't, you know. So what we wanna do tonight is just to let you speak if you want to. If you own rental property, I've talked to Doris, you know, give us some input. I've asked all my counsel for two weeks to kinda be looking over it, change things the way you want to change. Let's get something in real estate that won't hurt the renter and will help whoever's renting. If you own rental property, it won't put you under to keep it up. So, with that being said, have all y'all got copies? And all y'all got, you know, okay?
We're not enforcing your rules and regulations, why do we need to do it?
Why don't we just enforce what we've got, we've got these things in place, Becky?
Yeah.
We just need somebody to enforce them.
And that is, we won't enforce them. Who is that "we"? Well, it's the city. Who's the city, Becky? You're the mayor, you can... I know, and I told them the other night that, you know, nobody wants you to enforce them because it makes people mad, and so... That made me mad. I know, because yours is right, Rocky. You don't have any problems.
This, if this not gonna make us mad, I mean, you're saying the old one says now we're gonna make us mad. So you're gonna enforce them, so you're gonna throw all this stuff out there. You don't think we're gonna be mad?
Now, Jackie, what are you talking about?
Hell, any of them.
Okay.
I went, I went to Connie a few weeks ago about a house on Torchy Street that's a junkyard. And I, you know, hey, you get the guy to clean it up. Well, we can't do that.
Connie said we couldn't do that?
I mean, yeah.
No, Connie didn't say we could not clean it up. No, she did not.
You can't do that.
Okay, well...
I told you, we have tried. Chad's been over there trying to get that place cleaned up. We have tried many times to get it cleaned up.
Gee, it's not cleaned up.
You got the ordinance, why don't we just enforce it?
Why don't you just enforce the ordinances that you've got? Instead of coming up with us?
Well, Connie, it was to get your attention, huh? Not yours, Jackie. But this, I told Jason to get me an ordinance that, you know, that we can figure out how to get people to care about our property. And it's got everybody's attention, it's got everybody here.
Where did this come from? Who wrote this?
It was one that came from another town, and, you know, but we have thrown, listen to me, listen to me. We have thrown no registration fees, that's nothing. Nobody's gonna register their houses, no insurance. Everybody agrees that no insurance, we're not going to tell anybody, you know, the days after it's been vacant. I talked to Trey Burgess yesterday, yesterday, about there's boarding up. We've got a lot of people that, I mean, you might believe it or not, that are living in houses that aren't boarded up and all, and they're just living there without electricity or anything. They're, you know, they're just in here. But we're trying to help the squatter, I mean, keep our squatter population down.
And, and you got a cop, you got, you got police force to take care of that one.
Yeah, well, and they do. But they would be, I mean, it's every, I mean, if, if, yeah, we can take care of it. But wouldn't it be wonderful if the people that own the buildings and all took care of it?
If they haven't done it in 100 years?
I'm glad to.
Well, I believe y'all on that one.
I was just gonna do this. Show me in here where the cleanup comes in.
The cleanup of the buildings?
Cleanup, you're cleaning up your yard. I mean, what, what part of this is, have to clean your yard?
This is more on the buildings and the renter buildings and all of that. I read a thing the other night at the council meeting about your yards and all. And we have the ordinance, and I have called people in. I have talked to people and said, you've got to clean it up. We have cited them. I mean, John's sitting back there, can tell you, he tried it, you're in his administration. And, right, John?
Correct.
Amen to him, but...
I do.
Watch, uh...
Well, I'm, just a point of clarification. I only found out about this today, but it is, it says, the ordinance of the city of Op. Is, is this something that you and the council are looking at to do? Or is this just a sample that y'all typed up, put in here?
This is just a sample that I want to go through and take out and, and see how we can do it. We can go back to our old ordinances. I can, I can show you our ordinances in there, and Jason had, you know, they're about this high. And, I mean, you know, that are supposed to be carried through. But it's like I said the other day at our last council, the state comes and checks me at the woodmore, at the daycare. I can do what they tell me to do, or I cannot. And do I like everything they tell me to do? No, but I know to stay in business.
Let me ask you one question.
Okay.
Okay, when you lose your residents out there in, in the woodmore, you're gonna have somebody come in and inspect your property?
Well, I do it myself.
I know, that's not what I...
But when the next time they come, yes.
So, so you're gonna have an inspector come in and inspect your property every time you lose a resident?
Twice a year, or twice a year, when they normally come.
Yeah, when they normally do, yes.
That's not what this is.
Well, it's there's every time. And then me and Connie talked about it the other day, and we went over it. And I said, you know, we don't see any sense in anybody coming every single time. That, those are the things that we are trying to critique. And see if we can come up with something that all the renters in here, everybody in here, Connie and we agree with. If you see that door, something, you see what I'm calling out?
I got any questions?
You know...
Well, I don't see the need for new ordinance. I, I mean, we have ordinance, we just need to enforce, but we've done.
Have any of y'all read the standard housing code? Has any council member read the standard housing code?
Not many.
Oh?
From Mark.
That's my question. Have any of you read the standard housing code and know what you were talking about asking?
Very, 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 very little.
Don't read the whole thing, see what you're putting people up to.
It says in here, when a rental dwelling unit is vacated by a tenant, the owner of the unit must apply and receive a certificate of occupancy from the building official prior to you being reoccupied. It goes on later and says, once he comes and inspects it, the owner, when I have one of my units come in, I go in, I write it up, I have my form, and take the paperwork out a little bit. He goes in and takes the crew, cleans it up, and gets it ready to rent. So I've got to call and have the inspector come and inspect it. Then he goes on over here and says, just give it 30 days. All right, if I read it on the 31st day, I gotta get another inspection. It should be, once he inspects it, if you don't do this, it's inspected for the duration until it's rented again, not, not even 30 days. Because that's ridiculous.
But, like I said, a lot of this, and that's what we want to do. We want your input, those of you that do have rental houses and all. We want some of your input to see what, you know, but we've got codes. And we can go just with what we've got now. And critique, I would say even critique that, but the main thing, and we've talked about, if we don't enforce them, it doesn't matter what kind of codes. And right now, we're not enforcing them.
I had an inspector come and inspect my houses because all my houses are very nice, livable homes. But I don't want even have to come do it if I rent. I've got over 100 rental units, and I've always got at least eight or 10 each. And if I have to have one that's over 30 days, since he's been there, I shouldn't have to have him back. And then it says I'm penalized if I do meet with him and not meet me. That's right, that shouldn't be going.
Can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, just...
I can't talk as fast as Doris can.
I'm sorry, Jim, how do you mean to holler over me? Sometimes I get a little nervous.
What kind of, I'm just, I'm just wondering what kind of timeline y'all are under? I mean, are you just throwing this out for comment? And, and do you have an idea like when you want to bring it up for a vote? How soon the decision will be made?
Yes, I'm just throwing this out, and when we decide, when we all get together, and we may have another meeting just like this, because, you know, we cannot meet privately and, or anything, then, and we kind of come up with talking to you and seeing what we can do for the community, how we can help, but also clean it up. I'm just, you know, we've got too much property in Op that is trash. And I get that from anybody that moves into Op, that's what I get. And I, it's, it's not a, a pretty community to move into anymore.
Dr. Burgess, we will revisit old ordinances and codes.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do, and see where we are, and see what those codes do. And Donna, you gonna make us read all those codes and all of that? Yeah, yeah, because they're, they're like this. Yes, John?
What I understand is you're not, no longer going to enforce this, is this correct?
Right.
Because as an investor, I invest in three different states. I've never had anything like this in three different states. Florida, I've got property all over Florida, and not one county, from Tampa to St., St. Petersburg, to Fort Walton, to Asheville, North Carolina. There is nothing like this. This would hurt investor coming in, would hurt me. I would not want to invest in more than Op.
Do those other cities enforce their building code?
You don't have to go, if you, if you had your place empty for a month, or six months, or a year, you don't have to have it inspected, it's your building. If it's, if the grass is growing up, and it looks condemned, they'll come by and send you a letter. Okay, and tell you you have 30 days...
That's what we do.
To, to clean it up and appeal it. If they don't, they'll come and clean it up and put it in taxes against your taxes.
That's what we do every...
Okay, and so you get your money at the end of the year. Asheville does the same thing. Tampa, St. Petersburg, Fort Walton, does the same thing. If your grass grows up, and your building looks bad, they'll come and they'll peg you and tell you what's wrong with it. You have 30 days to appeal it, or 60 days to fix it. And if you don't, all they do is come and clean it up, mow it for you, and they tax you at the end of the year. You go, oh my, what am I, what's this $150 for, or $500 for? You gotta pay that, or you pay your taxes. And all three states do the same thing. This would hurt investors coming into Op. I know there's a problem here, there's been a problem forever. I know me and TD's butt heads with this, but it's a problem in Op. And I know, and it's gonna continue, but you're gonna have to, I think, if you look at your old ordinance and you go back and review those, you can enforce those. And just take case by case, individual cases.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim.
I buy six or eight houses every year to tax auction in Op, from the county. Okay, the only thing I can do, though, if they don't belong to me, I can keep the grass good, and I can make sure that it's dried in and it's not rotten, roof's not rotten. But I can't go in and do any repairs or fixing on that home for three years until I get the deeds to it. Connie will call me and tell me that, if I see you've bought one at tax auction, the grass has got to be cut. What we do, we go cut the grass out of it, we keep the yard clean, and we make sure that the house is dried in and it's not rotting or leaking. I mean, that's all we can do. And you see, now those houses, they gonna need some repairs. But I can't go spend thousands of dollars repairing that house before I own it. And so that, you've got to look at that too. I bought six this year at tax auction.
But you can rent them without them being up to cover? So you're saying you're not renting?
I can't do anything.
You can't do anything?
If I did, for three years, I can't do anything. I can, if I, I can, but then I might lose everything I got in. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah. And that sounds reasonable to you.
As a matter of fact, I've got two right now that I already own. And I was, when I took it, it was saved up and then what they have to do, they're gonna get away with it. But in the meantime, all these I have bought. I will keep them clean on the outside, and I'll keep it, keep it from rotting in the middle of the day. But that's all I can do, that's gotta be...
Thought you knew we didn't get nothing on this one.
And, 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 you know, maybe y'all, maybe y'all get it wrong by throwing this out, but I did get attention. That might be an effort to get attention. But in fact, he called, talking, that's right, and...
There's, there's, that's all over the city that needs to be done. That brand-new sidewalk we've got down here's got grass growing in it because when the guys cut it, they blow it in there, now they're grow, it's growing up. It's getting where people can't even walk on it. That's the city's responsibility.
That's the city, you're right.
Somebody needs to do something about that. Now, who's the somebody? We don't have any assignments anymore. I don't know, can I call Gary? Is he over the house? And, uh, is he over the utilities?
You call Connie, and she'll call Frager, and that's the rule, you know?
It, I, there's people around me that have junky houses.
And, but you're in the city, you're not in the city, so you can call your councilman.
I don't have a councilman, I have all you guys, all my properties in here. That's exactly right. All my, all my property's in this, and all my family's in this.
Well, I have a question.
You got a son-in-law right there.
He never tells me a thing about what goes on. He's not supposed to, because he knows it'll make me angry.
Yes.
He gets no, he gets no more.
You should come and eat with us, it's okay.
My, my only concern with any of it, the old ordinance, the new ordinance, whatever you might want to do, is what's to make a new ordinance worth it, more than the ink that's on the paper? Because apparently, we have a problem with our, we have a law, and it's not followed. You just get a slap on the wrist, and there you're done. Or we're gonna go cut your grass for you, and then we're gonna tax you, and we just keep going in this lovely cycle. Can we not figure something else out?
That's what we got to figure out, how to enforce better. How to, how to make the, you know, go on, Johnny.
How many of your residents in Woodmore draw about $740 a month? That's what they live on?
Yeah, and I know that's what you're dealing with.
And then they gotta, they gotta eat groceries, they gotta pay the motor bill, they gotta pay rent. You know, it's, it's a tough world, these jobs you're talking about. That's what this city needs, is jobs. We need some places, and when the meal was going, the sewing factories were going, this was a great place to live. And rental property is worth something. Right now, it's not worth anything. You can't keep anybody in, they rent, they come in there and they pay you one month, two months, and then they live there six, and you have to get them out, you have to evict them to get them out. You've already spent more than they ever got out of it. Then you gotta repair the house and fix what they tore up.
Right. And my, and my thing is too, Johnny, you know, you're a good friend of mine, but we've got to keep the houses looking out. I know you gotta put money in them, I get that, and I know you're not gonna get a lot of rent out of them. But if we want Op to look better, we've got to keep our rental properties, and not just, I mean, not just homes, our downtown, you know, our buildings, just to improve Op. And a lot of things need ta, just, just, well, 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 I'm saying, carrying down. And have a green space there would be better than a house falling down. And, but, but we've got to also, we've got to start these ordinances on people that are trashing their front porches and their yards. I mean, you know, I wrote around the other day, and you can't even get in some people's houses because of everything outside. Yes, James?
What the city needs is along with the ordinances, we need an ordinance enforcement officer. It's a full-time officer, or it could be somebody that's well-ready, a city-employed, but that would be their job. And, and they, they're the ones who would write the, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And that's what we need, because we can write everything we want, but if there's no enforcement, it'd be just like our southern border.
Well, that's what I said, Danny is ours, and I don't, you know, don't shoot the messenger when he comes and he checks, you know, what, and says, you know, you need to clean up this.
Keep this in mind.
Do what?
Keep this in mind. If you do away with all of the low-income housing in Op, other than the government housing, you're gonna lose a lot of people in Op, a lot of people out to schools because about a third of my rental properties are lower-income people. They don't make the $700 a month, they're on the fixed income. They can't pay. If, if we, if we have to go in there and spend thousands of dollars on those units just to get them what you think they need to be, they can't live here because we can't let them that cheap. Now, don't get me wrong, we keep our homes up, but they're, they're not gonna be pristine like that you would live in, or I would live in, but they're gonna be livable, they're gonna be clean, they're gonna have good carpet, full cover now, stove, refrigerator. But they're not gonna be something that somebody's gonna pay $700, $800 for. But they can pay $300, $350 is the best they can do, or they can do, because they don't make the money. Their children goes to school here. Well, once you do away with all the low-income housing, you're gonna run all these people out of Op, and the schools are fixed to feed it. And so keep that in mind, whatever you do, make sure that you remember everybody is not as fortunate as we are. So make sure you keep those people that are on fixed income. I, I went to a lot of elderly people that draw such security. And that's all they got.
And that'll help...
They will be months that, but they'll come to me and ask me, look, I've gotta buy medication, can I waste a mission? You've gotta remember, we got people living in Op that are a lot on that way. Don't forget about it, okay?
And Jimmy, I'm not, and I'm also, something probably losing me a lot of bugs and causing, giving me a lot of headaches, but I'm bad about saying what I think. We are attracting people into Op that aren't contributing to Op, that they're bringing it down. And I'm saying that out loud, and I'm sorry. The, you can, you can, what, what they say, we can find the cheapest, you can ask the children when they move here from Indiana, Minnesota, I can name several, you can ask why, why they're here. that you can ask why, why they're here, because this is the cheapest place. My mom and daddy say we can live here cheap. And, they're, they're not people that are contributing, they're not getting jobs in Op. They're not contributing to Op. And, uh, so, um, I think if we improve our housing, put some money in it and improve it, we might see a little bit different class of people coming in. I know that one of the main things, uh, problems in Op is we don't have rental houses that, when people move in and they wanna rent a house for a while, the houses aren't up to par with where they wanna live. And so they go to Andalusia, or they go to, you know, somewhere else. So that's what I'm saying.
Andalusia's not a lot, but- Just drive around over there, just drop around over here a little bit.
Drive around, I got some places. Every town does, every town does, we know that.
Becky, if I can, when you were talking about economic development, housing falls totally into that. When you do have industry that's looking to move in an area, they're trying to find a place, not only a place where they can bring in business, what is the workforce gonna be like, but what type of housing will their employees live in? And they're gonna be bringing in middle-level management or whatnot, and they're not looking for a $300 a month place.
Yeah.
And we've got to be able to help bring up our level thing. We understand there's a lot of people, about the last statistic I saw, 52% of the population of Op is living off of some form of assistance, some type of government check. Okay, we understand that. But what we also, at the same time, need to do is help bring up, uh, our neighborhoods, have a little pride in the community, et cetera. That, that will help bring things up.
That pride in the community, we used to have a yard award, did we not?
We did, and we talked about this at our last meeting.
Be proud of what we have in Op, but we don't celebrate, I mean, not that there's anything we're celebrating, but I'm, I'm sure there are, is what I'm saying. But we're not celebrating, like you said way while ago, Op seems to be full of negativity, and that's what we're focused on, is the negative.
Right. And we talked about this at the last council meeting, what, uh, somebody came up with, is like each one of us in our district, you come up with a house, a business that is the most improved for, say, the, the month, or if you don't wanna do it every month, a quarter. And I'm gonna get with them and see if they will do that. And if they, like, if they personally don't wanna do it, because it might hurt them publicly, if they beat somebody over somebody else, you know, get somebody in your neighborhood, say, "Would you do this? Will you just go around the neighborhood, see who has improved the most? And cleaned up their house, improved..." Uh, I'd like to mention one, um, Lundy, on, uh, East Heart. He bought Miss, uh, Sin, uh, Miss, um, Vince's house, and he, he has it looking so nice. It, it just really, you know, he's done a lot of work with it, and it looks really nice, and-
Jerry, make a good thing in the chamber.
Yeah, well, maybe, yeah, yeah. And, and the chamber, Kelly back there has nothing else to do with it. Kelly, you might wanna take that job on. But anyway, Davis, talk to me.
Hey, I wanna tie the negativity comment into the big picture, and how we can change that. And so, I look at the big picture, and it, and I think the decision we need to make, are we gonna go green, are we gonna spend capital, remodel, fix up, or are we gonna go new construction on the green lot? Okay? So where are we going forward as a community on these, on these greenhouses? And I think, on the negativity, I think we're a generation or about 20 years away from sweeping all that out of Op. The old, old, new employees gone, I'm talking about passing away and moving forward. So I think we may be a little too quick on this, that's just my opinion.
Now, now, what are you saying, Davis? I'm not understanding, you're saying that what?
If we're, if we're gonna turn some of these houses into green lots-
Right.
We're still negative as a community now. We're still an old community, we're still drawing social community. Most of the people that spoke here will not be here in 20 years.
Oh, goodness.
Thanks.
So, so-
You might, uh, Doris, there? Doris? Hey, hey, hold on, you got this fellow there might not either.
But why are they negative, Chuck? Why are they, because they're hanging on to the sadness. They're holding, they're holding on to the vision of what this place used to be.
Yeah.
And when it, when those people are swept away of what it used to be, and there are no visions of what it used to be, then you can move forward.
Well, I'll die as soon as I can, David.
There's a lot of negativity in Op. Johnny Wilson, how, Johnny Wilson, how was it in 1960? Was it rocky or rolling, baby?
I'm, uh, I'm probably the youngest person in here, and I can remember when Op was great. But anyway, okay, so what, what we're gonna do is move forward. Move forward, I'm asking everybody in here that has rental property, that has a, not even rental property, if you own, and you don't rent it, and you own it, or, and I don't think there's anybody in here that trashes their place and their own home and all. But, uh, we've gotta clean it up, and we've got to come together to do it, and it's a choice. And I know it's a financial choice, I get that, but we've gotta figure out some way for us to work together to, uh, improve the community. That's just what it is, and I'm big, big, big on that, and, um, sorry, you know.
Work on day.
Huh?
How about a work on day?
A work on day.
We all been like, been in this room, you know, we just start working together.
What, Johnny?
Work, work together is that right word, and it, uh, well, we had the, a mayor here years ago that he did work with us, construction people, people in rental business, everybody. He worked with us and helped us. I've got, uh, like, four services, electrical services, I had to change out because a limb fell on the service drop, which belongs to the city, it's not mine.
Yeah.
Is that correct? Am I correct in that?
Yeah.
I've got one bent right now that a, a truck hit the pole, and they didn't tell me about it. It bent, bent my, the city replaced their pole, transformers, everything up here on it, but they didn't let me know, so mine's bent, and I'm gonna have to change mine out and, and pay for it myself.
The city did that?
And another one, the city pulled the pole down and tore the service off of my house, and I had to rebuild that service and put a new one on. That's not working together.
No.
That, see, that, that's, that's something we need to do, and, uh, you need to work with us, and we need to work with you.
Yeah, exactly.
And that, that will make this situation work a lot better.
Okay, and that's right, John.